Still got a couple next.
Good evening. We're so very happy to have all of you here and particularly our wonderful retirees that we see here. And it seems like y'all been having a lot of fun and we gonna have some more fun as soon as we get through this meeting. But we do appreciate you coming here, et cetera. Our mayor is unable to be here tonight. He had another engagement coming forward. So we are going to begin our meeting this evening with councilmember Dorothy Dowd providing the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. For those who are with us tonight, you are welcome to join us for the invocation. Father, thank you for every participant here with us and their will to be active in our community. We are so fortunate to have the blessings of this space, the blessings of technology, and the opportunity to safely gather in person through your gifts to us. We recognize that these are very difficult times for many people in our city and throughout our country and throughout the world. While some are celebrating, others are mourning. Thank you for continuing to give us hope and for allowing us to engage on issues in a fair and respectful manner. We have seen the passion of so many people in our community, and we are grateful for the gift of open hearts, thoughtful minds, and respectful discussion. Bless our meeting this evening and all of those present. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. At this time, we have several people who have signed up in order to address our council. And please remember, there's a three-minute warning, and you have the middle. And please give your name and address. We're gonna call city residents first, so I'll call Jeremy Croweber, 103 Lloyd Street.
I'm sorry, can we do the roll call and approve the minutes real quick?
You're not official. Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember DeWorcan.
At the beach.
I'm sorry.
Oh, he's there remote. Look at him. There he is.
Hey, John. He's at the beach. Good to see you, son.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington.
Here.
Councilmember Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Mayor White.
And please keep councilmembers Ken Gibson and your son in your prayers. He's at the emergency room somewhere. So we just hope it's just something simple. So keep him in your prayers. So Mr. Croweber, do you please come?
I'm sorry, we still need to approve the minutes from Chief Ford's name.
Let's let him talk.
Okay.
Okay. Maybe it's because he's my neighbor and I know him, so I recognize him. Okay. Anybody having disagreement?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And does anybody have any communication? This also says that too. Thank you. Now we'll have Mr. Croweber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeremy Croweber, 103 Lloyd Street. Thank you for having me. My name is Jeremy Croweber, and I live at 103 Lloyd Street in Councilwoman Fleming's district. Over the last several months, I have reached out to several of you via email, the City Codes Department, and the Greenville Police Department regarding excessive noise from the business dog culture located at 627 West Washington Street. I live two blocks away from this business, and at any hour on any given day, I can hear dogs barking incessantly for more than 30 minutes at a time. I've been led to understand that dog culture was granted a special use permit when they opened, yet the measures that were deemed appropriate at that time have either not been enforced or they were not adequate to ensure the business was not disruptive to the establishments around them. So looking into chapter 16 of the municipal codes, Article 2, Section 16-92 explicitly prohibits noise that interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of nearby properties and continuous or repeated noises. So I hope that, you know, I've brought this up a few times, and I hope that maybe we can have a conversation, not only for our area, Councilwoman Fleming, but other areas to prevent citizens from having this constant noise.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Croweber? Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Alex Castellanos. Mr. Castellanos. Okay, he's not here. Okay. Jessica Saravia.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak to you again.
Could you give us your?
Yes, I live in Atherton Way in Greer. I'm here to talk to you again about the wings of the city statues. I'm here to tell you remove them. I'm not sure why you would approve of something so perverted and inappropriate to be placed in a prominent location like Main Street and Falls Park. I'm not sure why you would approve of it at all. Two meetings ago, someone mentioned that the, that one of the statues in the Peace Center, and the mayor pointed out that the statue inside was on private property. And while that statue is right next to the window, it's meant to be seen by people outside. And I just want to say that if a man were to go and undress and pose exactly like that statue next to that statue, he'd be arrested, naked. And to take this farther, if anyone were to stand naked in their own home's window, purposely expose themselves to their neighbor's kids, they would be arrested. If a woman were to go out to the park, undress and pose next to the statue of the hugging naked woman, she'd be arrested. If a man were to undress down to a thong and pose like the other wings of the city statues on Main Street or Falls Park, but let's say in front of an elementary school, he'd be arrested and he'd be called a perv or a pedophile. Let's say that each of these, in each of these examples, the people explain away their actions as artistic expression. That excuse wouldn't work. But somehow these life-size naked statues are okay? Why? Because they can't move or breathe? There's no logic in that. I mean no disrespect when I say this, but you're old enough to understand what decency is, and you're smart enough to know that there's a real moral issue here, not a simple issue of mere likes and dislikes. If you think it's okay because it's art, consider that art, like movies and TV shows, have ratings, and you also have a choice to walk into a museum. But Main Street and you also have a choice to walk into a museum. But Main Street, Falls Park, the community as a whole is affected by this. And what happened to common decency? You're allowing children to be exposed to this trash. Please consider how your leadership positions affect the community. Consider the time we're living in now. As you said, we are in a country that is more divided than ever. As leaders, do you want our home to be a place that brings people together? Or will you continue to be proud of standing for something that is not only wrong but causes more division? I'm asking you to have a heart for the community as a whole. Be the leaders that actively bring the community together, not actively tear us apart. Thank you.
Please, 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 please. Don't clap. Thank you. Ms. Susanna Saravia?
I'm gonna talk a little bit different.
Please get your.
Oh, sure. My name is Susanna Saravia. I live at 613 Phillips Row, Greer, South Carolina.
Yes, ma'am.
I came two weeks ago, and I sat, and I heard the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance, we say, we pledge allegiance, a nation under God, you know. So, and then, we prayed, and Mr. Stahl, he said, and at the end, you can pray to any name of any God that you want. And I thought, well, we just pledge allegiance to a nation under God. So now, we can pray to any God. So I said, well, this nation is under one God. And the God that we speak, a nation under God, is the one that had the power to bring us to life. When God made men, he made it out of clay, out of the ground, of the, out of the ground. God first created the heavens, and then he took the clay, and he, because he's a great artist, he put every, he made like a, like a template, okay, like a model of a man. And he said, okay, this one has a heart, it's gonna have lungs, it's gonna have everything, it's gonna have, where the blood is gonna flow. But after God created that man, at a, at a model of the ground, he bent down and breathed his breath of life to that model he made. So that came the first human being. And it was interesting, because when I read the word of God, he gave him a spirit. So the spirit communicate with God, that is a spirit. And he also gave him a soul. And the Bible says that man has a, a blood, the blood in his life has a soul, you know. So what I wanted to tell you, that when men sin, his spirit was taken away from him, but he was given a temporary life here. Because, see, God created us. We didn't create ourselves. And he wanted to save us. But what Satan did is he polluted the mankind, their minds, so they make gods out of.
His time is up.
Well.
Through miss.
I'm just telling you, seek the Lord with your heart, and seek him while you can be found, because he's gonna come, and you better find in him, because he loves you, and he gave his son for you and for me, so we can repent of our sins.
Thank you.
And come to a life with him. Take care.
Okay. We go to a great section of our program tonight, where we are going to be recognizing the annual retirees from the city of Greenville, and we have lots of them who are present and many who are not present. But it says here that there's a controlled combined service of years of 621 years. Woo wee! We're very excited. So, Mr. Stahl and I will go down here to try to give out a few things. All right, we have some gifts and some plaques to recognize our attendees, and I know some of you want to take pictures. So we're gonna try to, we'll figure it out. We're gonna try to do all of this and get it done. And we appreciate your attending tonight. From our leadership team, we have Mr. Michael Murphy, who is not with us. But is there anyone here from, well, our city manager could take his, Michael Murphy? I think they, okay, maybe they kept that off, but Mike Murphy. 16 years and two months. Wow. It probably is not here. All right. From Community Development Administration, Jenny Stroud, 19 years and five months. Now, this says, this says, legit, I see. Okay, come on, take this picture. Okay, we got to have hugging and pictures. And from our Economic Development, Mr. William, Walter William Taylor is not here. Okay, no one's represented here. From our Fire Department, we have lots of wonderful people. William Alexander. Mr. Alexander has 39 years and 10 months. Oh, yes, honey. We, we are all together. That's the truth. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, she's not here. Benjamin Dillon, 35 years and two months. Mr. Dillon. Thank you so very much. We have Mark Jones, 37 years and eight months. Wait a minute. Yo, that's the most important picture, right? Thank you. All right. Mr. David Kearns, 37 years and 11 months. Okay, we have Daniel Romano, 26 years and five months. We're so sorry. We gotta watch them. Frank Williams, 34 years and two months. Okay. From our Municipal Court, Pamela Fulbright, 26 years and six months. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to call you Pamela. So good to see you. So good to see you. Parks and Recreation, we have Wendy Brackman, 24 years and two months. And also from Parks and Recreation, Benjamin Foxworth, 14 years and one month. Make sure no more cameras. And now we have, well, let's see, our police department has several people, and I don't think any of them are here, but I'm gonna call this out. We had Ulysses Duckett, 28 years, two months. Alan Johnson, she'd be here. Hey, Alan! 23 years and two months. Go ahead, Alan. Hey, Alan, good to see you. Okay, not here is Charlie Mills, 20 years, one month. Danny Nguyen, 25 years, 10 months. Greg Smith, 23 years, six months. Public Transportation, we have Mr. Stephen Chastain. I know I saw it. Yeah, he's cool now, 'cause he's trying to retire. So good to see you. And let's see, Catherine Morgan's not here, 12 years. Public Works, Alan Beatty, eight years, five months. Alan? Alan not come, I'm sorry. Deborah Graebley, eight years, three months. Deborah? Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, please give all of them, please stand. Y'all stand. Sorry, group picture. I'm not real good. Group picture. Okay. We have appointments to boards and commission. Okay, our Board of Zoning Appeals?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Fleming. I'm standing in for Councilmember Gibson, but I'd like to recognize the service of Dr. Nika White and Louis Martinez for their service on the Board of Zoning Appeals. They, they, I would say the only downside is we didn't have them for near enough time on these boards, because they really did serve so well. But I know Louis is moving, and Dr. White has some work obligations that are preventing her from continuing to serve. So council recently received their resignations, and that created two vacancies on the BZA. So I recommend the, do I need to do these two separately?
Yes.
Or, okay, one at a time?
Well.
Well, I'll just say, recommend the appointment of Krish Patel to an unexpired term ending December 31, 2021, as well as recommend the appointment of Lauren Roundsville to a term which would end 12/31/22.
Okay, you've heard the appointment recommendation for Krish Patel, Lauren Round. Any other nominations? Okay, recommend. All those in favor of Krish and Lauren, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one left? Okay. Arts and Public Places?
I'd like to recommend for Arts and Public Places, a three-year term. Recommend the appointment of Amanda Bennett to a term ending April 30, 2024.
Amanda here? Any other recommendations? All those in favor of Amanda, please say aye.
Aye.
I should say, is Krish Patel here or Lauren Roundsville? Krish, I thought I saw you in the back. Stand up, sir, I can see you. Sorry. Good to see you. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you both.
Is Amanda here? No. Okay. Thank you so very much. We'll go to our consent agenda.
May I to approve?
Second. All right. It's been moved and second to approve our consent agenda. Clerk Haller-Roe.
Councilmember Dworkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Aye. Clerk passes. Aye, regular agenda? Let's see. Let's see, unfinished.
15A, An Ordinance to Amend Sections 19-2.3, Specific Standards and Other Requirements for Applications for Development Approval, 19-5.2, Definitions, Measurements, and 19-6.1, Off-Street Parking and Landing of the Code ordinances of the city to create affordable and workforce housing incentives.
Okay, this particular item has been asked to be delayed to our next meeting, so we'll go on to item 15B.
An Ordinance to Amend Section 19-6.10, Traffic Impact Analysis of the Code of Ordinances to amend the requirements for a traffic impact analysis.
Second.
To move and practice second with Clerk Haller-Roe.
Councilmember Dworkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Aye. Item 15B passes. Item 15C?
Ordinance to amend Table 19-6. Ordinance to amend Table 19-6.1-1, Off-Street Parking Requirements, Schedule A of the Code, to modify off-street parking requirements for restaurants and bars/nightclubs, and to add parking standards for breweries, wineries, and distilleries.
Is there motion?
The move.
Second.
Okay, item 15C, motion. All those in favor, clerk call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye.
Item 15C passes, item 15D.
Ordinance to amend Sections 19-1.11, Definitions and Table 19-4.1.2, Table of Uses of the Code, Modifying the Table of Uses to promote land use compatibility between certain non-residential uses and existing residential.
Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye, item 15. He passes, item 15E.
Ordinance to amend Sections 19-7.5, Stormwater Permits, 19-7.6.2, Minor Stormwater Permit of the Code, to create additional stormwater control standards for commercial and multifamily developments that abut and drain to the single-family detached use.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye, item 15F passes, item, um, 15G.
What, did we skip that?
I mean, 15F, I'm sorry, I skipped that one.
Ordinance to amend Section 8-256, Outdoor Displays in Cafes, Prohibited Acts of the Code to allow for certain outdoor seating encroachments within Unity Park.
So move.
Second.
All right, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye, item 15F passes, item 15G.
Ordinance to rezone approximately 3.87 acres of real property located on Lawrence Road and Ackley Road from R6, Single Family Residential, and C3, Red Regional Commercial District to PB Plan Development District.
So moved.
Second.
And Jay, I have, I have a question, please, or clarification. The, uh, what, what you're, what we're asking for today is merely a rezoning.
That's correct.
Uh, so any, any issues we might have with design, ingress, uh, driveways, traffic, all that will come before the Planning Commission, correct?
It is, uh, they were required to bring in a final development plan, which covers a multitude of different issues, dumpsters, fencing, parking access, green space access.
Stormwater.
Just going off the top of my head.
So, all that was to be resolved with staff
and then taken back to the planning.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Is the developer here tonight? Anybody from the development team? Mm-hmm. Okay.
Hands and things.
Okay, good to see you. So, um, staff will see the final development plan, and then it will have to come before the Planning Commission?
That is how it works.
Okay.
Typically, the applicant will get with staff and work things out.
Okay.
Um, however, that said, uh, what was approved is basically the rezone. But when they do a planned development, they do include a site layout. So that's, that's assumed. Um, so the footprint, if it changes substantially, that would be a major modification. It would take us back to the rezone. And the same is true, to a lesser extent, the actual design. Um, so if, if there is a fundamental rework of the design, like you change from three stories to six stories, or you change your materials or your look substantially, that would also go back to the rezone level.
Perfect.
Will we have to have a traffic impact study? Analysis?
This one is 116 units, and they, I think they did require traffic impact study as part of the final development plan.
Okay.
So not yet, but that's-
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
All right, I have a question about, that I didn't, I didn't ask earlier, and my apologies, I just had it in my notes. This is in your staff report, that it's 100% affordable housing. All units are priced at affordable housing, but the targeted AMI was not provided.
It's 60%.
Okay, so that's been clarified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hmm, 100% and 60% or below?
That is what was proposed and afforded to you for approval, yes.
Okay.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, so the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye. Item, um, 15G passes, 15H?
Ordinance to approve an easement in favor of Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for the purpose of undergrounding utilities on property located on South Hudson Street.
May I have a prayer?
Second.
Okay, motion, second clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Aye, item 15H passes. We have no new business, et cetera, in the staff reports?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we do have a couple of staff reports. Um, but before we get there, I do want to thank Lori Sandoff for her service. This is her last day with the city, so we want to wish her well. Be the- Be the perfect.
She's the new city clerk at Travelers.
Thank you all. It's been my pleasure to serve the city of Greenville for the last six years. I appreciate it.
I miss you, Lori, thank you. Okay, um, Michael Fraxton's gonna give a quick update on, uh, sustainability plan, and then Matt Eufort will give us some good news on the zoo.
Good evening, Mayor Proton Fleming and council. I'm pleased to announce an exciting new project for the city. Um, starting here, um, in the coming months, we are going to be partnering with Furman University's Shai Institute for Sustainable Communities to launch a sustainability plan for the city of Greenville. We've given it a name already, Sustainable GVL, so we're excited about that. Um, the city's Green Ribbon Advisory Committee, the members of which are appointed by the city council, are going to serve as the steering committee throughout this project. Um, there will be a significant public involvement and stakeholder engagement process throughout. Um, we have a project website that either went live today or will be within the next couple of days. Um, and that is listed here. Um, I believe you can also just go to our search bar and type "Sustainable GVL", and the page should come up. Um, and there's an opportunity to there to sign up, uh, enter your email address and receive updates about the project. So as public surveys come out, um, open house events, um, you can receive notification about those. Um, happy to, uh, answer any questions or, uh, respond to any requests for stakeholder involvement. So, thank you.
This is exciting, very exciting. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Um, I want to remind everybody, there's, uh, food, food and more food. So, make sure we enjoy that. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll be very quick, because I'm standing between everybody and the food. Wanted to share two slides from our key financial indicators. Um, as council is aware, this is, uh, something we send out on a monthly basis that provides 20 snapshot indicators of how the city is performing financially. Um, wanted to share this highlight from the zoo. Um, we've got two measures. One is operating profit and loss. And, um, so with the zoo, as you can see on the, uh, on the chart here, we've seen a dramatic recovery over the last few months compared to the, uh, green line, which was last year FY20 during COVID, and the red line, which was the current year's budget. So we anticipated we were gonna sort of have the same type of year. Um, but we're, uh, we're officially in operating profit status as of, um, the end of May. So that's, uh, that's to be lauded for, uh, Angie Prosser, Bill Cooper, Eden Freeman, and the, and the team at the zoo. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, we're also showing, um, attendees. These are tracked, um, at the, at the gate. And so the blue line is FY21 year-to-date. And you can see we're tracking with and, and may even catch FY19, which was a great year for the zoo. We're already above FY20 for the entire year. So as you recall, when we shut down last year during March, April, May, those are the key months for the zoo. Zoo makes about 60% of their money for the year and has a huge amount of their, um, attendees for the year. So, just wanted to share these two indicators, and, uh, congratulations to the zoo team for their turnaround this year.
Thank you.
Mayor Fleming, I'll, I just want to chime in that had I known there was gonna be food, I may have stayed home from the beach. No one told me.
We'll have them to put some food in the freezer for you, sweetheart. Bless you. Thank you, you'll be very safe, et cetera. Any more, city manager? Thank y'all so much. And it's again, congratulations to our retirees, and let's go eat.
6:10 PM, 6:10 PM.